Call the meeting order, roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Vias?
Here.
Mayor Protem McEchrin?
Here.
Mayor Cox?
Here. There would be a statement that I would read on persons wanting to address the council. However, there is no one here to address the council. We will be going into public comments again when we go back into our regular council meeting at six. And so at this time, we're -- no one, no cards, no one to speak. I will call on the city attorney in regard to the closed session items.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We have four closed session items this evening, one for the airport authority, which is existing litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D1, and the names of the parties as well as the case number was set forth on the agenda. Item B is the same matter under the heading for the city council. In addition, we have two other city council actions, both anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D2, and there are existing facts and circumstances that indicate there is a threat of litigation. Those facts and circumstances are set forth on both of the agenda items, and as well as the potential plaintiffs. We are -- we would, to the extent there's any reportable action, we would report that either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the regular meeting at six o'clock.
City Attorney, are there any questions or comments from the council members? If not, at this time, at 5:01, we're going to adjourn to closed session.
CND. At this point, there is no reportable action. However, the closed session is going to continue to the conclusion of the regular meeting and has been adjourned until that time. So if there's reportable action at that time, it will be reported at the conclusion of the closed session.
Thank you. And because we're running a little late, I jumped to the following page. And so we know we're all here, but roll call, Madam Clerk and my apologies.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Vias?
Here.
Mayor Protem McEchrin?
Here.
Mayor Cox?
Here. At this time, we're going to have the invocation by Curtis Green from Burning Baptist Church. Mr. Green, he is here, and then followed by the Pledge of Allegiance from Police Chief Sam Lachey, and Sam is in the back. So after the invocation, please remain standing.
You would bow with me, please. Dear Lord, we come to you today, Lord God, just thank you for another day that we have not seen, Lord God. Lord, we thank you for your grace and your mercy that you've extended towards us, God. Lord, we ask right now that you would just come into this place, Lord God, and your word says that everything be done decently and in order, Lord God. So we pray that this meeting is done decently and in order, Lord. We're also instructed to pray then for those that are over us in authority, Lord God. So we pray for everyone in government, everyone in leadership above us, from the president all the way down to these five city council members, Lord God. And we find it not odd that it's five, because five represents your grace, Lord God. So these have been graced to do this work. We thank you, we praise you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Madam City Clerk, I don't see any plaques, and I have no notations. There are no vote of presentations or anything at this time?
No presentations tonight.
All right, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, present the agenda to the council, please.
There is only one revision on tonight's agenda. That is on Agenda Item Number C4. It is a revised monthly statistics report from the Sheriff's Department, and those are the only revisions.
I'm sorry, that's -- is that the JAG grant you're talking about?
Item C4. It is a consent calendar item.
Yes.
Yes, the quarterly statistics report from the Sheriff's Department.
Thank you. First item on the agenda would be appeal hearing. There are none scheduled, and none that come before the city council. Next item is a public hearing. This would be a public hearing on a proposed resolution, Victorville Water District 14-005, entitled "A Resolution of the Victorville Water District Making It -- making it determinations." I don't think that's correct. "To Fix Levy and Collect Standby Charges for Water Improvement Districts Number One for Fiscal Year 2013-2014." I do not have any cards from anyone, but at this time, advertised public hearing, I will open the public hearing on this item. No one wishing to speak on this public hearing item. I will close the public hearing. Any questions from the council members and staff? There are no questions, we can have a motion on this, please.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
The next item on the agenda would be another public hearing on Resolution Victorville Water District 14-006, "A Resolution of the Victorville Water District Making Its Determination to Fix Levy and Collect Standby Charges for the Water Improvement District Number Two for Fiscal Years 2013-2014." I have no cards of anyone wishing to speak. However, I will open the public hearing at this time on this item. There's no one coming before the council. I have no cards. I will close the public hearing. Any questions of the staff and council members? There being no questions, call for the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias. Councilmember Garcia? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number three. B3 was originally scheduled for a public hearing to be held at the city council's May 20 meeting. This item is now scheduled for a public hearing to be held in a special meeting of the city council on May 27. However, because it was advertised, even though it's going to be the same subject, it will be a brand-new hearing with a brand-new notice of hearing at the newspaper. If anyone would like to speak at this time, we will take that testability, but the hearing, the special public hearing will be held May 27. I have no cards, I have no one to speak at this time. Mr. City Attorney, can we close this item out since it's rescheduled, or is this to be continued?
Correct, there's no need to even hold the public hearing, just since it's on the agenda. If somebody wanted to speak to it, they would have that opportunity, but there's no need to take any action at all.
I wanted to make sure that if anyone didn't get the word that it had been rescheduled, if they wanted to, if they traveled and wanted to be heard, that they could be heard. Apparently, people know that, so there's no reason to continue.
That is correct.
Since the meeting is closed, and so do we take any action at all, or is it just closed out?
No need to take any action at all. It's going to -- it has been fully noticed for the 27th, and...
No action, and this matter is dropped. Item number four is a public hearing, adopted Resolution Number 14-025 for fiscal year 1415, confirming the annual assessment approval for the Engineers Report for the Citywide Street Lighting Assessment District. There's no questions to the staff. I want to open the public hearing on this item. Anyone wants to speak in regard to the Citywide Street Lighting Assessment District? I have no cards or notification, and no one has responded in writing. I therefore will close the public hearing. Is there any questions of staff?
Mr. Mayor, even if there's no questions, I would like to clarify one issue that you had raised in the agenda briefing. It happens to be on page 10 of the report. I'm looking for a page number on the PDF, and I don't see it. But if you get to the report itself on page 10, there is a chart for expenditures, and you appropriately questioned administration at nearly $600,000. In speaking with the Director of Public Works on that, the term "administration" was used. However, that includes all the labor costs that would normally be included with operations and maintenance, the next column over. The actual administrative overhead costs are only about 2.5% of this amount. So as with the other two public hearing items, this item is no change in the rate, simply an affirmation of the methodologies and the current rates that are being charged.
Well, thank you. So there'll be a revision of that to show a reduction in administrative costs?
Yes, some of the administrative costs would be put onto operations and maintenance more appropriately for that spreadsheet. We'll certainly clear that up for next year, if you'd like, for the record, memo to the council perhaps, that clarifies those exact cost splits. We could do that.
I think it would be helpful, this is a public document, people will look at it and wonder why that administration fee was so high, and, you know, it wasn't universal that everyone was for the street lighting assessment district. It's good for the city, it's good for the citizens, and we want to make sure that we keep their full support. So that revision would be very helpful, I think, to everyone. No further questions of staff? Call for motion.
Motion by Councilmember Garcia, second by Mayor Protem McEchrin. Motion carries unanimously.
Next item on the council agenda is the consent calendar, and this is -- normally doesn't require any discussion. This would range from C number one through C22.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
I may have a card to speak on. It's just public comment? Okay, this will be -- yes.
Question was, I believe I was present on the 15th and the 22nd. I don't have the minutes open in front of me. I think I was listed as absent at one of these meetings.
I believe that was the 29th.
29th. And assuming that's the one I was absent at, I will abstain from voting on C3.
C3, all right.
We'll note that for the record as an abstention.
Are there any requests in the council to pull any of the items from the consent calendar? If not, then ready for a motion for the approval of consent items C1 through C22.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEchrin, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Next item on the city council is under D1, Written Communications. That is a request for the council to award a contract to signature offset in the amount not to exceed $33,000 to furnish and deliver recreational brochures to various residents located throughout the city, as budgeted, by the way. Questions of staff? If not, motion will be in order.
Motion by Councilmember Garcia, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number two, Resolution Number 14-026, Proposed Physical Confirmation Agreement Exhibit 1, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville Approving the Form of a Physical Confirmation Agreement and the Terms and Conditions of the Attachment There To Concerning a Power Purchase and Sales Transaction Between the City and Exterra Energy Power Marketing LLC, and Authorizing the City Manager to Execute Such Agreement on Concurrents of Certain Conditions. Are there any questions of staff?
Can somebody explain why this is called a physical confirmation agreement rather than just an agreement, a purchase agreement? What is the meaning of that, physical confirmation?
You know, I'm going to have to defer to the city attorney to see if he knows the answer to that, because I do not.
I unfortunately do not either. I suspect it's a function of just usage over the years, that this is the form document they have always used, and somehow somebody developed the physical confirmation designation on it, but I'm not sure what the...
Doesn't seem particularly material, as far as it is an agreement. I don't know that it really adds much to call it a physical confirmation agreement. Perhaps that makes it something other than a verbal? I don't know.
We're entering into an agreement to buy something?
Entering into an agreement to potentially buy from this power marketing group in the future. As we need power for our electric customers, the city council has authorized the city manager to purchase that power. Typically, those power purchases come rather quickly because there's a deal, and so there's a certain authority yielded through resolution to the city manager to do that. This is essentially adding one more option to purchase power from. When we do this, we buy the cheapest power we can. It's all the same quality.
And it looks almost the same as D3, which is called a master power purchase and sale agreement.
It is. That's the form of the agreement that the Shell Corporation uses.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions? Call for the motion.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEchrin, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Item three, the Master Power Purchase Agreement and Sales Agreement Including Cost Sheet, Collateral Annex, including Paragraph 10. It's a request to execute a master power purchase and sale agreement with Shell Energy North American, per U.S. LP. Any questions of staff? Not called for a question?
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia.
I meant to say call for the motion, same thing.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item four, and this is the -- no, this is different. This is submitted by our police chief, and this is a copy of the 2014 Justice Assistant Grant Award Agreement and the JAG Grant Expenditure Plan. This recommendation is that the city council ratify the expenditure plan for the JAG allocation for 2014-15, and authorize the city manager or his designee to process all documents required by the program, for the program. Questions of staff? If not, call for the motion, please.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Next agenda item, Agenda Item Number Five. This is a navigation easement for Southern California Logistics Airport. The recommendation from staff is that the city council, or in this case, the honorable body, which is the directors of the airport, adopt the form of a navigation easement for Southern California Logistics Airport and approve SCLA Resolution Number 14-001. Are there any questions of staff?
Yes, I'm afraid there are. I'm a pretty well-educated guy, and in my entire life, I have never seen the word "navigation." Could somebody explain to me what an "navigation easement"? I thought it was a typo. I thought you stuck a V in.
Before Keith starts to explain it, I'd like to comment that maybe I'm not as well-educated as you, but I made the exact same comment when -- in staff meeting. Is that a real word? I've never, ever heard that word before.
It is not in the dictionary.
When I typed it into Microsoft Word, that red squiggly came underneath it and said there was something wrong, but it is a used term in aviation.
What's it mean?
It's basically to allow for the aviation or the flight over a property. Air navigation, I think is the term.
Navigation for the aviators, therefore...
Navigation? Why didn't they put an "N" on the front of it? It would work so much better.
Aviation and navigation combined.
Do we have any other questions, Esther? Not called for the motion, please.
I hope not.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
The next item is the Airport Influence Area Boundary Map for SCLA. Recommendation that the city -- that this honorable body, the directors of the SCLA, adopt an airport influence area boundary map for SCLA. SCLA Resolution Number 14-002. And I think this one will have a map attached. Yes, it is. In the back of the last page, it shows you what those boundaries are. Are there any questions of staff on this item? If none, call for the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number seven, Amendment 1 to Standard Lease Agreement for Buildings 780 and 789, Southern California Aviation SCLA. Recommendation is that the Board of Directors enter into Amendment 1 for the standard lease agreement by and between Southern California Logistics Airport Authority and Southern California Aviation, approve a rent credit to fund repairs in the amount not to exceed $45,235 for fiscal year 1415. Any questions of staff? If none, call for the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
Next item, item number eight, Additional Appropriations for Routine Maintenance and Repair for the Off-Airport Properties B&amp;D Parcels. Recommendation is that Board of Directors approve an additional appropriation in the amount of $25,000 in support of future maintenance and repair expenses for facilities located on off-airport properties. And these are B&amp;D parcels, and I'm sure you're familiar with those. Any questions of staff? No questions, call for the motion, please.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEchrin, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
Next item is item nine. This is a termination and settlement agreement. Recommendation that the successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency adopt Resolution R-S8-14-002, approving the termination and settlement agreement by and between the successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency and Matthew C. Drake. Any questions of the council of staff? Very lengthy, it's very interesting reading, it's about time we settled this. I have no questions, call for the motion, please.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
Next item, item number 10, Lead Track Use Permit, Church &amp; Dwight. The city council -- the recommendation, city council approve the attached revised lead track use permit by and between the City of Victorville and Church &amp; Dwight Company. No question? Call for the motion, please.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
Next item is item number 11. This is adoption of successor agency budget for January 1 to June 30, 2014, for Victorville's portion of the Victor Valley, that's the VITA project area, and adoption of SCLA's related debt service budget. Recommendation from staff, particularly Mr. Metzer, is that this be adopted. Questions of staff?
Yes. Keith, I'm looking at this budget and taking into account the property tax distribution we received from VITA in March, and cash on hand, we have enough to cover this obligation for June 30. Am I right?
Yeah, the upcoming debt service obligation is due June 1, and effectively, what this is doing is, the city had actually collected the revenues from VITA but never accounted for it, so effectively, it's been sitting in account, so this is cleaning up the appropriation on the revenue and expense side so that time comes June 1, that the actual debt service payments can be paid.
Is this a catch-up payment for when we were late in December?
No.
No, that's been done.
This is actually the accounting for having recognized the collection probably back in February or March when we actually received the funds.
And the next payment we're going to make is in December?
Our next payment should be due June 1.
Yeah, I mean, after this one.
After that, it would be December 1.
December 1.
And between now and then, there should also be, I guess the next payment would probably be in July, that we would -- actually, VITA would receive something in July, and then VITA has to go through its accounting and then distribute to us.
We'll see, probably in August or September.
August, September, yeah.
And will we have sufficient funds on hand to cover that December payment?
All of them? I do not believe so. We haven't done the accounting, and we haven't done the forecasting, but I would expect that we're still in a deficit position.
So we will still, and we know this today, so when it hits the newspapers, it's when we're in default, it's a technical late payment come next December.
Right, right. We're seeing revenues increasing, but just not meaningful enough to catch up.
Thank you.
Any further questions of staff, the council? If not, call for the question on this item.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number 12, Bid Submittal Summary. City council, the subject here is to approve the contract award, number JM14-067, for the construction of Cashiers' Expansion at City Hall to 4-ACE Construction, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $124,987. Recommendation, this adopt. Any questions, staff? If there are no questions, a motion will be in order.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Protem McEchrin. Motion carries unanimously.
Does this mean the lines will be reduced, Doug?
Lines actually have already been reduced. They'll be more efficient after we get this done. Very good.
The next item, going to make a comment about the lines, but that's okay. The next item is a Count Stripe Ink Construction Agreement for Painting Rubber Removal, Paint Removal, Southern California Logistics Airport. This is a construction agreement, it's Amendment 1, to the construction agreement in the amount of $52,447.19. Recommendation is to approve. Any questions of staff? If there are no questions, motion will be in order.
Motion by Councilmember Garcia, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Next item, item number 14, is you have in your agenda a location map, a detail map, an agreement for purchase and sale, purchase of Victor Valley Water, Victor Valley Wastewater Reclamation Authority's Percolation Pond Number 14. The city council and the water district approve the acquisition of Percolation Pond 14 from Victor Valley Wastewater Reclamation Authority, and approve the agreement for purchase and sale. It says the budget is $647,000, but the project cost is $173,250. Is that -- are we approving then, Mr. McGlade, $173,250?
I could answer that, actually. That's what you would be approving, is the $173,250.
That's the approval.
And Mayor Cox, for the record, it should be noted that Councilmember Vias has left the dais and is not participating unless she is an employee of the VVWRA. And while I don't believe it's an FPPC conflict, it would avoid any possible appearance of bias.
Thank you for bringing that to my attention. Are there any questions of Mr. McGlade or staff?
Sean, we have your assurance, this is the final agreement. Just nod your head, you don't have to walk up.
He nodded his head affirmatively. If there are no further questions of staff, motion will be in order.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias absent.
That member remind Councilmember Vias that she can return to the...
Mr. Mayor, I would really like to thank Sean McGlade, his staff, and Doug Robertson's help on this getting this done. It's been a project.
The record will show Councilmember Vias has returned to the council. Next item, item number 15, is runway closure equipment purchase. The recommendation that your honorable Board of Directors approve the purchase of runway closure equipment from West Coast Sales JT Industries in the amount of $73,300. Are there any questions of staff on this item? If there are no questions, a motion will be in order.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEchrin, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
The next item, I'm going to read it, but I'm going to ask Doug Robertson for a very short explanation, because there have been some discussions, and we have a consultant that's studying the matter, and we're not into the budget, yes. On the surface, it appeared to be premature. It's not. Once we've got the explanation, it'll make sense. But this is a copy of the 34th Amendment to Law Enforcement Contract 94-909 for police services for the City of Victorville, in the amount of $19,702,731. Mr. Robertson, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, actually, last Wednesday, when senior staff went through the agenda... the agenda, I indicated to our police chief that we needed to pull this item because we are still in discussion about adding police officers. In fact, we're looking forward to continuing that discussion next week with some options to add a few more, I'll say, that will be discussed next week. But after hearing me out, Chief Lucia was very polite in reminding me that if I wanted law enforcement services on July one, that we needed to have an approved contract. So essentially, this approves the current level of service, assuming you want to at least continue that, and then we would be adding deputies pursuant to direction potentially next week or at the final budget. It would be an amendment to essentially this agreement. But this allows us to send a signed contract to the county, which they require, before they'll vote on it. So in order to get in line with the rest of the cities who are also doing the same thing, they need to at least know that we are going to continue our current level of service, and any additional level of service that would come out of the budget discussions would be added through another amendment.
Mr. Mayor, we need to correct the obvious typographical error here. The contract itself is right, but this and the staff report talks about July one, twenty fourteen, through June thirty, twenty fourteen. That needs to be twenty fifteen.
Yes, that would be the actual recommendation with that to whoever makes the motion, that it would include that correction. Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy.
I thank you for that explanation, I did not want a misunderstanding that somehow we were going to not discuss this or continue with the same level because every single council member has pledged to look at this closely and add law enforcement if we possibly can. That extent hasn't been determined, but I didn't want a misunderstanding. No further questions? To motion?
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Protem McEckern. Motion carries unanimously.
Next item, item number seventeen. This is a communication system virtualization project. City council and directors to approve this purchase, the project cost is ninety-two thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars. I looked at it, I read it, I do not understand it. Doug, short explanation, please.
Yeah, we have need for additional servers for a lot of different reasons, not only are we growing, our, the volume of information that we store is growing, and because of the SEC case, that volume cannot be purged because we're required to keep it all. So essentially, we need additional storage capacity, additional server capacity, and this would take our servers that we need into the cloud, it's cloud computing, so that the cost is reduced.
And that explanation initially is what threw me because we're gonna move the applications to the city's private cloud, and I didn't know we had one. But now I understand what it is, so there's no further questions?
It's gonna rain on you.
Probably will.
Like virtualizing, it's like virtualizing your shot to the green. No, that's.
Visualizing, huh? Yeah, that's different.
Mr. Mayor, I was gonna ask you to explain it since I'd explained it to you in, in our agenda briefing, but.
Yeah, and I keep going over that explanation trying to fully comprehend it.
Bill Webb is responsible for this, right? Bill, nod your head, thank you, make sure.
No further questions? Motion?
Motion by Councilmember Garcia, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Next item is agenda number, agenda item number eighteen. Presentation of project update for Metro High Desert Corridor Project by Melissa Hogwin. Oriano Associates, did I get that right? No, I didn't, I guess.
Good evening, everybody. Danielle Valentino with LA County Metro, apologies for the misunderstanding in the agenda, Melissa's part of our team as well on the outreach. I'm here this evening with our project team for the High Desert Corridor, and I'm sure, pretty much I'm sure all of you have heard of the project to some degree, and I, we did bring a video, is it possible to show the video? It's about two minutes long.
Are you showing the video or the PowerPoint presentation?
We'd like to show both if possible, they're about under, together, they're probably under about seven minutes, about seven minutes. It's up to you. This is our PowerPoint slide, and we can show you this and then queue up the video if you'd like, either after or before, we sent it ahead, whatever is your preference.
That's council's decision.
Would you prefer the video first or the presentation?
If you are prepared to proceed, I think that would be more efficient to you to proceed as you're prepared to.
Okay, sounds great. Again, I'm with the project team this evening, to my left here is Will Lamborn, he's interim project manager, and also Carl Price is our senior environmental specialist on the High Desert Corridor project with Caltrans, and Lori Hunter's in the back of the room here, she represents the Joint Powers Authority. Next slide. Our project partners for the High Desert Corridor include Metro, Caltrans, the HDC Joint Powers Authority, Sandbag, SCAG, and also the cities of Victorville, Adelanto, Lancaster, Palmdale, Town of Apple Valley, LA County, as well as San Bernardino County. So all of the stakeholders on that slide are involved in the High Desert Corridor project development process, they've been at the table throughout the project development, and we are in the environmental study phase. So the purpose of coming out today is really to share with you, you know, that we are in the environmental study phase on a sixty-three mile corridor that extends from the city of Palmdale out just past around Apple Valley. So that whole corridor is being considered as a potential multipurpose corridor, that could include highway, it could include high-speed rail, it could also include green energy infrastructure, as well as a bike way. So what, what we want to share this evening is really give you a project update on the development of this environmental document. There is not money at this time to fund construction of the project, but there is money available to study the alignment and figure out what may be the best solution in terms of infrastructure between the Palmdale and Victorville, Apple Valley endpoints. We have been working with city staff as well as with the Joint Powers Authority representative. We really appreciate the involvement of Mayor Protem, Ryan McEckern, thank you very much. We've also worked closely with Brian Gangler, and we really do appreciate the more, the day-to-day and ongoing engagement from the city, as we really are aiming to develop a project that reflects not just agency, you know, Sandbag, Metro, San Bernardino County vision, but really is representative of the vision of all the cities and jurisdictions along the alignment. So at this phase, we are actually moving to release the environmental document for public review and comment. So by August, mid-August, we hope to actually release the document for your city's review and public review by all the cities and stakeholders, and allow for formal public hearings to take place by September, early fall timeframe. And so the goal of this evening is to give you kind of an update on the project from the team, as well as encourage you to stay engaged with the team as we move to this major milestone of releasing the environmental document. And with that, I'll turn it over to Carl. I'm sorry, I'll turn it over to Will first, he's gonna give you a quick update.
Good evening, thanks for the opportunity to be here, I'm Will Lamborn, the interim project manager for High Desert Corridor. Just real briefly, we'll go over some of the, the purpose and need behind the project, which is really our reason to carry it out to begin with, there are a lot of different goals and objectives related to it. Part of it, as you see sort of in this list, is to address recent projected population growth in the future in the High Desert region, both in the Antelope and Victor Valleys. And with that growth and with kind of the, the lack of reliable transportation options going east-west that exists now, another part of that is to increase capacity and safe east-west travel options up here in the High Desert. Along with that, another goal is to improve options for regional goods movement and improving the regional goods movement network. And with that as well, with providing improved access and connections to regional transportation infrastructure, both existing and proposed in the future, which includes both airports and passenger rail, and other improvements that are coming in the future in this area and also in the Palmdale area. And lastly, one of the goals of this project in being a real multipurpose, sustainable corridor is to try to contribute to statewide greenhouse gas reduction goals. Next slide, please. So here you can see a map that's just really the basic High Desert Corridor alignment, you can see the orange line going across the top, that's the main alignment of the High Desert Corridor, in purple, you also see those four different dips which represent physical variations, A, D, B, and E, where the highway and/or the rail would actually flare out in a way to avoid impacts to communities and different resources at those particular locations. The small triangles that you see on there as well, which are yellow, represent proposed ramp locations, which were come to as a result of our traffic study and also expected land use in those areas. And lastly, want to mention, you also see those two bubbles at each end, those have been areas of special attention and study, which is where the high-speed rail component of the project, the alternatives that include high-speed rail, would connect in Palmdale to the Palmdale Transportation Center, and over here in the Victor Valley to the proposed future Express West Station, which would be the terminus of the rail on the eastern end of the project. Next slide, please. And so as we've alluded to a couple times, and Danielle did too, the idea with this project is that it would truly be sustainable and multipurpose, so this includes several different project components. One would be a freeway expressway, another is a central segment approximately between Hunter Street East and US three ninety-five that is being looked at as a potential segment for tolling. We're also looking at space in the right-of-way for potential green energy transmission and production. Also on the side of the right-of-way, we're looking at a fully separated bike way. And lastly, as we mentioned as well, some of the alternatives include a high-speed rail feeder system which would connect to proposed systems at each end of the High Desert Corridor, both California high-speed rail on the west, and the proposed Express West system connecting to Las Vegas on the east. Next slide. So with that, that brings us to the actual alternatives that are being considered as part of the environmental document, which are kind of a combination of all of those different components which we just mentioned right now. So there are, there's an alternative which is just the freeway expressway, there's an alternative that's the freeway expressway with the toll portion in the middle, then similarly, there's an option of the freeway expressway with the rail, and an option of the freeway expressway with the rail and with the toll. We also have in there what's being called a hybrid corridor alternative, which would could, which could basically be a combination of any of those aforementioned parts pieced together in the combination that's decided to be most appropriate, and of course, as we're required by law, we're also looking at a no build. Next slide. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Carl Price, who's our environmental planner with Caltrans, to just briefly touch on the environmental process itself.
Thank you. You know, as was mentioned, we're going through the environmental process currently, we are preparing an environmental impact report, environmental impact statement, and Caltrans is acting as the lead agency for both NEPA and CEQA during this process. Now, on the slide, you can see the, just a generalized shot of the process that we're going through, and we began back in December of 2010 during scoping, we held a series of meetings throughout the corridor to try to get public input on the project, see what, to introduce the project to the public and get input, see what kind of comments people might make or what the interest was in the public. We took the input from the public and we began actually performing our environmental studies, and that process has been continuing since then. You know, we are at the point now where we've, we've gone through and completed most of our studies, we still have a few that are, that are still to be completed. We've identified the impacts associated with the various resources and various alternatives that we're looking at. We screened out a few alternatives that either have excessive impacts or just don't seem to make sense anymore based on the current situation and public input. You know, we are currently preparing our draft environmental document, which we anticipate having out for public circulation in late summer of this year. We will hold a series of public hearings along the corridor, probably four hearings spread out throughout the corridor to gauge public input, take comments from the public and from, from the cities and other agencies. We'll take that input, address the comments, address the questions, make any modifications that need to be made, and then prepare a final environmental document based on that input in the spring of, of 2015. Throughout this process, you know, our design team on both the highway side and the rail side, they're, they're doing their preliminary engineering, you know, modifying the design as needed and as appropriate to, to address some of the concerns that have been raised throughout this process. And, you know, we've had an extensive public involvement process along, you know, throughout this entire four-plus years that we've been going through. So between, between the, the input from the public and the studies that we've, that we've been conducting, you know, we've kind of refined our project over time, and that's what will be presented, you know, to the public in the draft environmental document. Next slide, please. So these are twenty-some-odd resource categories that we're studying in our, in our, for our projects. You know, as I mentioned, most of the studies are complete, we've got a few that are still, still need to be complete, but they'll be finished very soon now. And of course, the, the results of these studies will be incorporated into our environmental document, and will form the basis of our final decision on, on how to move forward and which alternative would be selected. With that, I'll turn it back over to Danielle, and she'll provide more information about the public outreach.
Thank you again, just to wrap it up, we really are just really wanting to thank you for your engagement and involvement of the city staff, and to just remind you that you do have representation in this project through the Partners Group, who, who meets pretty periodically, and then also the Joint Powers Authority, which has a lot of regional and local representation as well. But if there's anything more we can do to make sure you're getting the information you need, or anything more we can do to support your city as we continue on, please reach out. Our big commitment is not just to do the legally required scoping and public hearing, the two for the, the process, we really want to make sure we are hearing the cities along the way. To date, in term, just next slide, please. To date, we've had about eighteen public meetings, twenty-eight elected and city staff meetings throughout the corridor, we've had seven corridor project partner agency briefings, thirteen events along the corridor, open houses, and then six interest group briefings with WTS and other organizations. We presented at the High Desert Corridor Opportunity Conference, and also recently participated in the airshow, that's in the other county, LA County Airshow, and had a bunch of folks show up for that. So we continue to look for opportunities to, to get the word out. We've had also forty-four stakeholder briefings and meetings throughout the corridor, and then also two media briefings on both sides of the county. I'm just trying to make sure we're keeping our media folks aware of the project, and that way when the environmental document is out on, on the street with the public, it is very much understood what the project is proposing. We've also had several meetings provided by Ustream on internet. So to wrap it up, we, we do have an online engagement option, so if anybody doesn't want to come to a meeting, they can hop online and participate online. So with that, thank you very much, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you. At this time, we're on item E one, this is the time where individuals of the public may comment on items interested, interested in the public. I always have to, before I call anyone up, and I do have a card, but anyone can come up and speak at this time. If we have an agenda item, we try to give sufficient time to everyone that has an item. This last seven minutes, the presentation was twenty minutes. We do that because we want to make sure we don't cut anybody off and that they have their say when it's agendized and we have the information. If we do not have any information, but someone's coming up to speak, we give you three minutes because by law, we can't engage in a debate, we can't engage in a conversation, and the public did not know what you were going to talk about. So I always apologize that at three minutes, I'm gonna cut you off, because if it's agendized, you would have longer time, people would know, and we may have people who would want to show up and talk about that item. At this point in time, anyone may come up and address the council, but I only have one card, Kate Byer.
Hello, councilmembers. My name is Kate Byer, and I am the new Public Information Officer for Victor Valley Wastewater, and I just wanted to come today to formally introduce myself to you. A little background about me, I grew up in the High Desert, I've lived in the Victor Valley most of my life, was born at Saint Mary Was born at St. Mary's, went to Mojave Vista Elementary, Victor Valley Junior High School when that was still around. And I graduated from Apple Valley High. I have my degree in environmental science from Humboldt State University. I was offered a job in the wastewater industry, and my interest in the wastewater industry is its ability to be an energy recovery facility. And I'm honored to say that I am now employed by just such an industry, or just such an employer. I'd also like, with that being said, I'd like to formally invite you all to our biogas energy project, our ribbon-cutting ceremony, which will be held September 26. This project will allow our, our facility to become 100% energy-neutral by the end of this year. We'll be able to use all of the methane that we'll be producing to power our plant. This facility, this technology, is the first of its kind in North America, and one of only five in the world. So we're pretty excited to have this here in the Victor Valley. With your permission, I'd like to approach the clerk and give you flyers for our event. And I encourage the public.
Give those to the clerk.
Thank you. I encourage the public, yourselves, your family, and anyone interested to attend. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, and welcome. I have no further cards from anyone wanting to address the council. I see no one approaching the microphone. At this point in time, we will go to E2. Reports from the city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Only one report. Mr. Metzler and I were in Las Vegas at the International Council of Shopping Centers Recon Event. That was the event where all five cities of the High Desert worked together to try to attract specifically new retailers to, to our region. And I was only able to attend about a little over a day of the show, and it seemed to be more people there, and seemed like there was more booths there. Our booth location, we'd prefer to have it a little bit more action, a little bit more in the middle of the, of the convention hall, but unfortunately, they reserved those for, for the retailers and, and for the, for the real estate folks, so. But overall, I think it was a good show. We got some interesting contacts. You never can quite put your finger on, did we get another XYZ company to come here? We're not at that point yet, but hopefully, the work that we did will, will get us there.
Thank you, Doug. E3, reports from council members. I will start on my left. Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember McCackron.
Yeah, actually, a couple of things. Kate, you did my job for me, because I was fully prepared to hand out these flyers, per your request, when I filled in at VVWR for both Jim Kennedy and our mayor, Jim Cox. But anyway, I've got flyers here if anybody wants them. And then to what Doug was just talking about, I'm sure most of you get the Western City Magazine. There's a wonderful article in there about all of our cities in the High Desert working together for that very purpose. And Doug, you're holding spyglass there. So I'd encourage members of the council to read that if they haven't already. And then finally, county, county-wide vision came out with a document, business-friendly best practices. I've handed this over. I meant to hand it to Bill Webb, but then I was reminded that he's no longer in that department, and suggested I give it to Chris Portrait, so I've given it to Chris Portrait, because Bill Webb wants all the fee and tax revenue that comes in via business-friendly practices, so. But I would encourage you all to take a look at this. I will make sure you all get copies.
Thank you. Councilmember Vias.
At my Victor Valley Transit Authority meeting, we took a look at the draft budget. It looked okay, except for one item on there, which concerned me, is that the purchase of property over by Midway Appliance to put in a transfer center, which would include restrooms. And if we, if, if that ends up coming into the city of Victorville, I think that when the LTF funds do go away, the city's going to be on the hook in the general fund for maintaining and keeping that up. It's going to generate more police calls, and we're going to end up assigning a deputy to be a toilet monitor. So I think that it's concerning, and I think the city manager and staff needs to get involved with that and try to do something.
Happy to take a look at it.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Vias.
And then also.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I did not, apologize.
Also, I would like to get an update on the golf course of what's going on and what's happening. I think those of us on the council that can talk about it would like to know what's happening.
There's been some questions, any of them that come to me, I just refer them back to staff, since I cannot be a participant in that. Any other comments, Councilmember Vias? Councilmember Kennedy?
Just a couple of things. We have not had a meeting since we got back from Washington, have we? So no one has talked about our trip? I don't think so, obviously.
I'm trying to remember. I've been.
We've had so many meetings.
Yeah. We've had quite a few meetings. I think we probably have had a meeting since then.
Oh. Well, if it hasn't been discussed, there were four of us, Keith and Doug and Ryan and I went along with Apple Valley and Asbury?
No. The Mayor of Adelanto was there, and actually, the general manager of VVWR was there.
Yeah. And had some, we had just two full days of meetings, and I think most were productive. We met with FAA on some airport issues. We also had a full house at the Department of Transportation, where we did some very serious and sophisticated begging for road money to finish that Yuculama Bridge. And we'll, we'll just see. I don't think any of us came out of that with a great deal of optimism, because they told us all the reasons most projects don't get funded. But we think we're high on their list, so we'll see. The other thing, and I'm, I hope I'm not speaking at all out of school here, I missed the meeting last week. Last week? The workshop on the compensation classification study. But I did read through it and did not have the opportunity to comment, and so I'm going to offer this comment. Last time I checked, government accounts for about 20% of our GDP, but what we'll call the private enterprise system accounts for the other 80%, or something in that neighborhood. That would suggest to me that probably 20% of the employees in the country work for government, and about 80% work out in the private sector. Don't know if that's exactly true, but it's probably something close to that. It occurs to me that it's difficult, and it may be impossible, to do a real evaluation of compensation of our municipal staff in Victorville by only looking at other cities. I don't know how we can compare what our public employees earn to the total economy without looking at what folks in the private sector earn. And that is a, I think it's an important comparison. And I, as far as I could see, that was never part of this classification and compensation study. I don't know if I'm suggesting we go back and redo it, but it just seems to me that when we're, when we're looking at our compensation, I shouldn't say ours, I'm in the private sector, and we're looking at how we pay public employees, we must be aware of how private sector employees are being paid as well. And that includes all of it. And this, I can't pass this up. The whole concept of defined benefit pension plans no longer exists in the private sector. It simply doesn't exist. There isn't a company out there that I know of that has defined benefit pension plans, and it's commonplace for us in the public sector, and that just has to be factored into this whole process.
Councilwoman Kennedy, on page 29 of the salary study, it states that we extracted private sector data for San Bernardino areas and Economic Research Institute.
I saw every city and every public agency listed, but I saw no specific listing from private sector.
I requested the spreadsheet of where they compared to, and what exactly they were comparing to per position. Now, I asked for it seven days ago, still have not received it, but I just heard that it came when I got on the dais, so then we'll be able to look at it. But it's going to take quite some time to look through it, because with this many employees, this spreadsheet should be thousands of pages, correct?
It's essentially one page per position. So for each position, we've got it list all of the different job, jobs that were, it was compared to. And to comment on Councilmember Kennedy's questions or comments, it's interesting, because last week when we discussed it, one council member had the opposite reaction, was why would you compare private sector jobs? And it, it was done where necessary, depending on the job type, if there wasn't enough public jobs that, that would compare to.
My concern of the salary study was that we were comparing to private sector jobs. When VVWR did their salary survey, the city of Victorville actually did not want private sector data put into it, because they felt that the salaries would be too high on the private sector, because they don't get the benefits on the back end, and the salaries are lower in municipal settings. So, you know, you know, we have to agree to what our commissioners or our member entities want. So my question was, is why are we comparing to the private sector in this case? And that's why I requested the spreadsheet, so I could see if the salaries indeed that are being compared are higher in the private sector. Without that spreadsheet, I, I can't tell. And then my other issue was, is that...
I will be surprised if that assumption holds true, that salaries are higher in the private sector, frankly.
And then also, then I was questioning, why were we comparing to cities like Rantow and Redlands, but not Adelanto? And we, we compared, and I'd like to see what positions we actually compared to Mojave Water Agency, and why wasn't Victor Valley wastewater in this comparison? So those were some questions I had. The consultant could not answer those questions at the time, and I still haven't got an answer for that, so.
Well, my assumptions could be wrong. I'm making assumptions, but I just, I would like to see that, those comparisons.
Councilmember McCackron?
Yeah, my apologies. I meant to mention one other thing. I wanted to thank the folks from Metro and Caltrans. So often, I hear about High Desert Corridor so much, especially from a particular person in this room, Lori Hunter, that when we have special presentations, I, I glaze over, because I, I live and breathe the project, as you know, being on the Joint Powers Authority, as well as Sandbag. So I do appreciate you coming and making that presentation to the council, here and the folks that are here in the audience. And for the council's benefit, I am on the Joint Powers Authority, appointed by our first district supervisor, and looking forward to approving that environmental document here later this year. And although there's not money to build a project, you can't go even ask for the money to build a project unless you have an environmental document completed. So looking forward to having that done.
Last, I have two items. Number one, when the questions were raised in regard to the salary review last week, at the end of the meeting, I asked Councilmember Vias to please share that information once she received it, because I had an interest in it also. But I haven't had that discussion, and I haven't received the information. Mr. Kennedy has asked for some very good information. I asked that that information be transferred to him, so he can review it. That way, I will not, we will not have three council members involved, and at the point in time, we have three council members involved, it'll be in a public session. Also, then, we were a little bit late coming in. I apologize to everyone, because we were in executive session. My understanding is that we may have a need to go back into executive session briefly after this council meeting. Councilmembers, is that correct? That is correct. Do we have any further action than coming at this time? If not, I'm going to not adjourn the meeting, but I'm going to adjourn the meeting to the executive session. I'm not going to end the meeting. We will come back in after the executive session and conclude the business at that time, but we have no other agenda items. Is that okay with everyone?
That is correct. I would also recommend that when we do adjourn the meeting, we adjourn it to the March 27th, sorry, the May 27th date at 5:00 p.m.
So when we come back in, May 27, did you say, is when we probably, it looks like we will adjourn the meeting to?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right. At this point, this concludes the business that we have on the agenda. Thank you very much for attending, and we will adjourn to executive session.
City council reconvened the closed session at the conclusion of the regular agenda items. We have now concluded that closed session. We had closed session on items C and D on the agenda. The agenda sets forth the reasons for the closed session and the appropriate code sections. There is no reportable action with respect to either one of those items. It is now the intention, I believe, of the mayor to now adjourn this meeting to the March 27th, sorry, May 27th date at 5:00 p.m.
That was the decision of the city council to adjourn this meeting. I indicated before, before we went into executive session, that that probably would be the intent of the council. That did not change. So this meeting is hereby adjourned until, again, for the record?
May 27th at 5:00 p.m., which will be a regular adjourned meeting, and it may also be a special meeting as well.
Okay. No other business coming before the council tonight. This meeting is adjourned until that time.